Good evening. I want to welcome everyone to the City of Oak Harbor Planning Commission Meeting of October 25th, 2022. This will be both a physical meeting, location and virtual meeting. Meeting may be viewed via live YouTube. To leave a public comment that will be made part of the meeting record, you may attend in person or please call and leave a message at 360-279-4512. No later than 5:00 p.m. today. That time has passed. So first item is roll call. I'm Vice Chair Freeman. I'll chair the meeting. We have Commissioner South who will be remote. Hello. We also have Schatz is also remote. Plumley, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, so we have, and we have Mr. Moustachio and Sajar. Are you are? So we have a quorum. So first item of business will be approved in minutes of September 27, 2022. It was a regular medium. And they have motion to approve.
Move to approve the minutes from September 27, 2022.
I need a second.
I can second.
Okay, we have a second and a motion. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Noes? None, we, thank you. Okay, the public comment area, we have nobody in the audience tonight. And we have any calls or any messages left? Seeing none. Okay, then the first item of business and that would be a public meeting. SEPA threshold discussion. This is Dennis LaFever. Staff will review what development levels of threshold trigger a SEPA checklist and what options exist for raising that threshold. Dennis, are you there?
I am, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Good evening, members of the commission. How are you this evening? Assume we're all good. This is a discussion item that we would like to take forward as a code amendment. It's discussing the threshold limits for the SEPA review that is common practice for us. I do have a PowerPoint which I will share. I assume you all can see that.
Yes, we can.
Basically, the purpose of SEPA, which is the State Environmental Policy Act, is to review projects under the eye of the environmental impacts. And tonight's purpose is to look at the thresholds that have been established for SEPA in hopes of maybe reducing some of the permit timelines and costs for applicants for projects within the city. Also to eliminate duplicative processes as far as review of environmental purposes and hopefully encourage some development specifically in the affordable housing area of the city. SEPA was born in 1971 by the state and is intended, like I mentioned, is to ensure that the environmental values are considered during decision making by the state and local agencies. As I mentioned, every project that we basically review needs to complete a SEPA checklist. The SEPA is identified in the RCWs as policy under 4321(c) and the procedures for SEPA, which are very extensive, are in the WACs under 19711. It is a local tool that we have used quite a bit. It is submitted by the applicant. The environmental assessment, it takes place by staff for review of all of the impacts, not only to the natural environment, but also to the manmade environment of a project such as traffic, potentially impacts to schools if there's a subdivision, a variety of different aspects the applicant must address as part of their development proposal. We do review this SEPA checklist and actually are the decision makers on most of these SEPA checklists and issue either typically a DNS, which is a determination of nonsignificance, meaning it doesn't have substantive impact to any of the environmental categories that are addressed under the checklist. In some cases, there are some minor effects which we can then issue a mitigated determination of nonsignificance, which means we can basically condition the project through SEPA. And in some rare cases, when there's a complex project, NEIS would be required, which is an environmental impact statement. Some projects, however, are exempt from SEPA and these are called categorical exemptions. And that's included under WAC 19711800. There are several different categories under SEPA that identify what types of projects are exempt. One of them is minor new construction. What's included in minor new construction are single-family, multifamily residential developments, agricultural structures, minor office, school, commercial and recreational developments, parkings, parking, fill and excavations. The state has established certain thresholds for these different categories in minor new construction that if the project is under these certain thresholds, no SEPA is required. It's basically an exempt project. They're considered flexible simply because the local jurisdiction has the option to change the level that is, that makes the SEPA a requirement. And we can set that through the state procedures at a local level. Our most local threshold amendment occurred in August of 2014. So we're moving on about 18 years of the existing thresholds. So what has changed since SEPA was developed in 1971? Well, as you're very well aware, we've done, and the state has required, a lot of additional work as far as certain mechanisms and certain procedures and laws that have been put in place to protect the environment, such as Growth Management Act in 1990, the critical areas which the Planning Commission was very integral in reviewing a few years ago. The National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System deals with stormwater and low-impact development, which is now a requirement in our code. And of course, the Endangered Species Act and the Biological Opinion, which is required by projects that need to obtain a flood development permit. These all are new mechanisms that were put in place since 1971 and all provide environmental regulatory guidance which weren't present in 1971. So there's a lot of duplication as far as review when we're looking at a SEPA checklist as far as what we already have in code that protects the environmental aspects of a project. But it is still a useful tool for conditions such as the mitigation and also allows a public comment period of 14 days. So back in 2012 and 13, the Department of Ecology updated their SEPA rules. The rules allowed the local governments to increase the SEPA categorical exemptions based on a process established by the state. And in seeing that, the Oak Harbor Housing Action Plan actually has made a recommendation that we take a look at our SEPA flexible thresholds and possibly increase our levels to help in, as I mentioned, reduce the cost and time to process a permit through the city. It would also help, we hope, in providing more affordable housing opportunities also in the city. So where are we currently with our levels? Well, as you can tell by this chart, Washington State is currently at a pretty high level. They've moved the single-family residential units up to 30, multifamily residential up to 60, barn loafing sheds can go up to 40,000 square feet without SEPA. Office, school and commercial developments can go up to 30,000 square feet. Parking facilities can go up to 90 parking spaces. And the excavation and fills can go up to, I think it was 1,000 cubic feet. Our existing thresholds, as you can see here, are well below the state requirements, or not requirements, but levels that are open for our possible increase. Single-family, we have it at four units. We don't have a category for multifamily, so it's assumed that four units of a multifamily structure, if it was more than four, say a five, five-unit multifamily apartment building, then that would require a SEPA review. We have 10,000 square feet for barns and loafing sheds. And the office and school commercial cutoff, we have at 4,000 square feet. Parking facilities is at 20. And the fill or excavation is at 100 cubic yards. So in discussions with staff, we are looking at implementing that recommendation that came forth of the Housing Action Plan to actually bump up our thresholds. But also, what I did as part of this exercise was take a look at some of the other communities in our region and as well as on the east side of the water over in Seattle, King County areas. And what I have highlighted in blue are the communities that basically have the same threshold levels as us, which include the City of Langley and the City of Squim. And basically, all of the other communities that you see in this chart have a higher threshold than we currently do at this point in time. So with discussions with staff, we are looking at making a proposal to increase our threshold levels up to nine units, which is essentially the cutoff from a short plat to a major subdivision for single-family residential, up to 20 units for multifamily residential. 10,000 square feet, we're going to keep as, at the existing square footage simply because we don't see a lot of agricultural structures being developed within the city. Office, school and commercial developments, we would raise to 12,000 square feet. Parking facilities, we would go up to 40 parking spaces. And then fill-in excavation projects, we would go up to 500 cubic yards. As again, we had conversations with staff. Ray Lindenberg was very instrumental in putting this together since he does a lot of the current-level project planning for us and has a good feel as to what would be required. Certainly, the 20 units of multifamily is only one-third of the state level. But again, we want to still maintain some environmental quality for some of the developments that we have. And we thought these would be good points, at least a point of departure for this discussion. So that's what we are looking at tonight. We don't need to take any action. You can have another month or so to take a look at this and certainly feel free to give me any comments or questions you may have. But we will be taking it to the City Council Workshop in November. We do have to prepare findings such as we need to explain in detail where and how we have in our existing code protective measures for the increase in the certain categories that I just described. I am in preparation of those at this point in time. We will actually have to do a SEPA on this, believe it or not. And then we will have the code amendment prepared through a draft ordinance. We are scheduling this for a public hearing at your November meeting. However, if you folks feel that you need more time to discuss that, we can certainly shift the schedule. There's no deadline for this discussion. And then we're looking at City Council adoption in early January or February. So with that, I'll open this up for any questions that you may have.
The floor is open for questions. Dennis, I'll ask the one question. Is this going to extend the permitting process, especially for the, like for the multifamily, going for like to five?
It, would it extend the permitting process?
Would extend the timeframe?
No, it would actually reduce time and effort that an applicant would need to do if he brings a project in that is under the new thresholds. Then it would be SEPA exempt. You would not have to prepare that checklist, which was part of your packet attachment one, essentially. Could be a lot of work for an applicant to pull that information together.
Yeah, that's, but part of our contention is that, you know, we try and streamline our, our system as much as possible to encourage development. Thank you. Any other questions from anyone? Seeing none? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I'm sorry. The next item is 2022 Comprehensive Plan and CIP update. It's a public meeting and Kat Klimak is the planner bringing this forward.
Thank you, Vice Chair, members of the Planning Commission. This is Kat Klimak, Principal Planner. Here to present the, or give an update on the 2022 Comprehensive Plan amendments. We've been discussing the amendments with the Planning Commission all throughout the year. We have some, as I mentioned in the Planning Commission report, we've talked about some land use anomalies. We've chatted about the PIP and the PBP designations and breaking them down or consolidating them into the industrial sections. We've had discussions on that. We're currently notifying property owners on the land use anomaly change as we speak. We have the comment period that's coming to a close here fairly soon. So we have some work that's ongoing. And part of the 2022 Comprehensive Plan amendments is the Capital Improvements Plan. And that's what I wanted to give the Commission a chance tonight to chat about, to have any, to ask any questions or comments. The spreadsheets have been included in the packet. These spreadsheets will be eventually incorporated into the CIP document, which has all the policies and so on, all the written material that supports the Capital Improvements Plan. I have a slideshow and I'll bring it up and we can go over it real quick and then we'll open it up to questions or comments. So I'm going to share my screen. All right, I hope you can see that. I just have the slides on the, on the left and I'll go down that. I know some of the spreadsheets are sometimes hard to see. This time I have provided copies in the packet, so the sheets on the screen, just for reference, maybe for discussion. So if you have any questions, we can refer to them. So again, this is a six-year capital improvement plan. And just as a reminder, the projects in the capital facilities, there are some minimum qualifications. They have to be greater than $50,000. They have to have an expenditure of public funds and have a life expectancy of 20 years. So projects that are below $50,000 can be in the budget, but they may not be in the CIP. So the CIP is basically tracking the larger projects for the CIP and trying to program them and schedule them appropriately. So we went through some of these fund statements at the last meeting. Not much has changed from last meeting's spreadsheets to this month's spreadsheet. There are minor changes. We did tweak some numbers and move some, added some numbers on the last column, but not much difference in terms of, sorry, my light goes out. Not much difference in terms of, not big differences in terms of projects. However, I can summarize them. The differences are highlighted on the right side of the screen here. So for streets, we don't have too many changes. We've added a project for traffic calming, which is the fourth line down on the Streets Fund. There's $15,000 every year. This is for projects that come up based on citizens' request for some physical improvements to be done in neighborhoods. We get a series of them sometimes and having a budget for it really does help implement some of those projects. The key here in all these projects, what I keep an eye on is the unsecured funding for each fund. So for a six-year project list of $21 million, we have about six to seven, almost $7 million unsecured. So that's about a third of the project fund over the six years is unsecured, mainly because we're dependent on grants for our street projects. And so we have several sources we seek grants for and are planning to get grant money. But that's kind of the balance we have to kind of have in the six-year planning process. The Parks and Recreation Fund, the Little League Fields renovation has been added for 2024. That's the one new addition to this fund. Parks project, projects are mainly because of the Harbor Heights project. We do have the unsecured funding higher in terms of numbers. And so about 65% of this fund, at least for these projects, is still unsecured. The Water System Fund, no new projects added. These are utility funds. They have projects programmed through the Water System Plan, so they have kind of a schedule to them and they also do have funding. So as you can see, the unsecured funds is just very little, at 2%. Similarly, wastewater system is a utility that we have. The changes to this fund, we had a north would be sewer expansion project in the last CIP and it has been removed. And there have been a couple of projects added, clean water facility screens. There are, these are some maintenance projects, I think, that need to be done for the clean water facility. And there's also an inflow, an infiltration grant that the city is applying for that's been reflected on this fund. Stormwater Fund, again, a utility project, no changes and no new projects from last year. So again, utility funds have usually a plan for accomplishing projects and so they are on track doing that. The Marina, again, this fund had a couple of changes. Actually, a couple of projects were removed from the Marina Fund, some beach armoring and stormwater improvements. I think it was dependent on a joint collaborative project with the county and it didn't quite work out in terms of funding and so those projects have been dropped. But other than that, the other projects on track and still on schedule. The General Government Fund, this one has seen probably the most changes in this year's update. Some of the additions are, there's been police department remodel project that's been added. Broadband study has been added. I think that's a grant that we're getting to do a study. A downtown study has been added. This is reflective of the City Council's workshop that they had and goal-setting process where the City Council identified several goals related to the downtown of Marina. So we don't know the scope of this project yet, but we do know that this was a priority for the, for the City Council, so we have added some dollars to get some help if the council chooses to go in that direction. So that's being proposed. And as you all know, the State of Washington has update cycles for the Comprehensive Plan. The next major update is coming up here in 2025. Usually, these plans take a couple of years or three years of process to update. And since there's a lot of changes in Oak Harbor, a lot of perspective changes, this would be a good time to maybe revisit the vision, maybe revisit the comprehensive plan and see if Oak Harbor as a city has some changes that it likes to see from a comprehensive standpoint. So we've added a project in for some compliance updates. City Hall remodels, there's, these are projects that have been in the, in discussion for many, many years. And finally, there are some drawings in place that we were able to get some preliminary budget dollars, so we're able to put this in to the CIP and see if we can get those things done. The new financial system, a new financial system is also added due to its cost. We need to track it in our capital improvement plan, so that has also been, actually, my mistake, the new financial system is not here as part of our new plan. I think that has been removed and shifted, so that is my error, as I was comparing. So that is the, the changes in our capital improvements plan. And as I mentioned, the sheets are provided in the, in the Planning Commission packet. And, oh, I have one more, which is the Senior Center. And again, no changes to this fund as well. So this is going in terms of schedule. We're discussing this with the City Council tomorrow at their workshop and we'll start to hold hearings for this at the November Planning Commission meeting and hopefully get it adopted before the end of this year. So with that, I will open it up to the Planning Commission for any questions, comments and for discussion.
Thank you, Kat. I've got a question. Because of the, the rising cost and expenditures that are, seem to go on a daily basis, are you having to touch all of these items, you know, for they've been on this list for some time?
Yes, there have been some updates to project costs that we had to go through and refine some of the costs. But at the same time, you'd be happy to hear that we also looked at way in many of the projects to cut scope and try to get it, get it done without expanding the scope. So though costs have gone up, we've found other ways to try and reduce project costs and still keep them going.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
Kat, can I add to that comment a little bit?
Absolutely, please do.
A little bit more specific, you gave some general examples. Harbor, our Seventh Avenue was a area where we reduced the scope down to get it done. So it's been a major priority and a decade-long plan there, so certainly getting the sidewalks there. Harbor Heights is, was one we're going to put on hold, so didn't really know what to do with the numbers on it. And it's at 5.5 million approximately and it ballooned to about 11.5 million. So we're updating this as we go, so it's going to be basically just putting it on hold, a reevaluation of the cost. But those are the two that, when you asked that good question there about costs, that really were affected. Harbor Heights was really affected by the increase in, in cost and, and just the scope was determined. So when it came in at 90% design, yeah, it went up from originally 1.7, that was the original estimate, to 5.5 and then all the way up to 11.5 now. So that's a project, we're going to leave it in there because we're going to continue with it with trying to plan and redo it. But it's just basically marked as on hold.
Thank you. I know that these numbers are a moving target, you know. Every single year, we face this problem and even more so now. But I think it's important for, you know, for the citizens to know that, you know, we're keeping an eye on the number itself. And in some cases, the prices go up and there's nothing we can do about that. But we still have to acknowledge that, you know, we're still moving forward with that or not.
Yeah, we've been doing a lot of tweaking on the numbers and driving CAC and finding us, you know, just difficult on there because just cost estimates and the way it's doing just keeps on fluctuating. At some point, we had to just put it in there and put our guess in there and just do those numbers. But we'll continue to tweak numbers on up and down on as we kind of evaluate the projects there.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Seeing none, we'll go into the.
Sorry, Bruce, I just wanted to relay Sarah Shaw is unable to use her audio right now, but has sent me a couple of questions for CAC. Do you guys mind if I read those just so that they can be addressed in the meeting?
Okay.
Okay. The first statement question I've got from her is verbatim. On broadband, I'd like to see a section here on the report including feasibility reporting for municipal broadband leveraging the Anacortes Municipal Fiber Line, which is piped through deception passes water line, and to review current cost burden of broadband on small and independent businesses. There's a second comment, but CAC, I wasn't sure if you'd like to respond to that one first.
CAC, would you like me to field the broadband? It's my area.
Yeah, I was going to say either Blaine or Dennis probably has a little more information on the scope of these broadband studies. So Blaine, maybe you know a little more on what the scope covers.
Yeah, it was kind of alluded to projects and really we don't have the projects there. Certainly wet fibers in there is kind of one of the items in there for $600,000. But I think the need of that and also the other one with the leak detection is kind of in there. But we really need the study to get it going on there. We did do a presentation to council and council was, and I'm not recommending we follow the Anacortes model and go into a utility. So I think there's a lot of controversy with that. I don't know that we have the same clientele. Council has not pushed it going forward. So we don't have anything in there following the Anacortes model of going into a utility. And certainly we'll refine some of the projects in there and look for additional partnership in there. So the broadband study has kind of threefold there, looking at accessibility within the city, look about speed in the city and then also affordability within the city and then also partnering with the county. And then studying whether the feasibility of doing the wet fiber in the city's lines there. I've met with three of the four carriers in this area. None of them really want to partner, but it kind of competes with them. So we'll just kind of see where that goes. And so, and actually, working with the county, hopefully we'll provide some of the matching fund because it's a, that $50,000 study is a 25,000, I think it's 12,500 match. And so hopefully advocate to the county to participate because it's going to be more of a Northwood Vissouer and Oak Harbor study with that. And then there's other grant funding as we go. So it all evolves. We do our best on kind of putting in here, but there's a lot more to come on broadband.
Thank you. Does that answer your question?
I think that probably responds to her first question that she asked. So I'll go ahead to the second question, verbatim. On the downtown/Marina Plan, this needs more detail and needs public engagement. I'd like to see a couple of facilitated public workshops to create ideas for using the soon-to-be-acquired spaces. And that concludes all the comments that she had.
All right, there's two, go ahead, CAC, you take the lead.
Absolutely. There'll be some, the scope of what needs to be studied or what needs to be planned for is yet to be determined. I think that needs to be done at the city council level. The scope of the project will also determine the costs of doing a plan or a study or whatever it is. So it is still something that needs to be worked on. So there will be public workshops and public engagement strategies to determine what is to be done with this Marina Downtown Expansion Study. This is just a starting point to get things started at the council level.
And then, CAC, good overview. The other one in there is the EPA Pioneer Way revitalization study. And that has a lot of effort, $800,000. We haven't secured the grant, but we're hoping that that's the extra fundings there with the new infrastructure bill on the federal level, the bipartisan infrastructure bills there. So more money's available. We have to own the property first. So those two will work hand in hand with each other.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you. We'll go to the final item, the monthly department report. David?
Thank you, Chairman, members of the commission. The last item in your packet tonight is the monthly report. And this month, we have a printed version for those of us who are here to look at. Just want to give you an update on what the council's done since you worked on a couple of items. You don't touch annexations, but the Larson Annexation at 957 Capitol Street has begun. And they're going through the process to get a survey done and get that prepared for the next council move. There was a public hearing we held on the text amendment for height limits. That was ordinance 1958 and that was approved September 20th. If you remember that one, that was the height capability to have art structures and other features at a little bit greater height through a conditional use permit. We held public hearings on the critical area regulations and those were continued. Ordinance 1959 was continued to October 18th. And then it was continued on from there to December 6th. So if you follow that at the council level, they'll be discussing that one again. The council goals and prioritization was approved October 4th. And maybe it would be interesting for you, maybe next time we'll share the council goals and prioritization. If you have not seen those, we'll just put those in your packet for next time so we can talk about what council's working on. Current planning, you've seen some of this stuff before, but just give you an update on where they are. The Crosby Trace Development, 10 buildings and 37 units located on North Oak Harbor Road. That has civil plans that are approved, so that your engineering plans are done. The Cedar Hill subdivision on Crosby, which was 28 lots. That's been through the hearing examiner and now is in civil review. So the engineering's being done on that. Marin Woods, which has been around for a long, long time here in town, you kind of smile. The installation of the infrastructure of up to 46 lots has been ongoing. And they've just turned in their final plat yesterday. So that means they're ready with their infrastructure to move forward. They're also shopping house plans to our building official, looking at elevations and other plans that they have four models that they'd like to start with. Hearing examiner for the Glint Car Wash in Sonic on Highway 20, that is scheduled for a hearing tomorrow morning, right here at 10 o'clock. In the building world, the scenic heights development has four homes under construction. The Habitat for Humanity has three homes under construction and that's right over here on Ely Street, not far from here. One new thing we'd like to add is new businesses that have come in. And so we see a lot of tenant improvements that come through our building department. One that's interesting is the Bull and Bear Motorcycle Shop. That's gone through a tenant improvement and they're just about done with the work. That's at 201 Southeast Pioneer. I think there used to be a car repair organization in there in that building, down where the car dealerships are. Van Pelt Construction is a tenant improvement on Midway. And in long-range planning, as you know, we've gone through our housing action plan and have been working to implement that with various things we've been doing, like adding density in subdivisions, changing setbacks, reducing lot sizes. We've changed the accessory dwelling unit regulations. So now we want to come up with a multifamily tax exemption process. And that's done in many communities around Washington. And so we'll start exploring that. We have a grant to work on that, to help fund that with a consultant. So we'll get that started. Administratively, the new permitting system continues to help us expedite permits and get a number of things more organized for our records people. And the state auditor's office was here last week. We had a three-day continuous improvement program seminar where the state auditor took us through a process of looking at our entire permitting process, put it on a piece of paper across the room. We spent three days figuring out ways to make it work better. And so we integrated that with our new permitting system to look at steps that we were not aware of, that we need to put in there and things that we don't need anymore. So a real good educational process for everybody that touches permits. I think the group also felt that the team is gelling better now. Engineering Department and the Planning Department, as well as the building and the fire department, we're all working together a little better now. So that's really the purpose behind getting together to do this. Next item, Sarah, maybe you could clarify for me. I think you and I talked at one time about having the next planning commission meeting on the 22nd of November, the week of Thanksgiving, or having it on the 29th. I think we might have asked the planning commissioners what they wanted. But maybe you could tell us again, was it the 29th or the 22nd that you'd like to meet again?
I believe we talked about the week after because the week of people tend to be out of town. We can always revisit and send out a special meeting notice if we choose to pick the 22nd. I think the one that was scheduled was the following Tuesday. So it's the fifth Tuesday instead of the fourth, just because it fell on the week of Thanksgiving. That's what I put on the calendar. But like I said, we could revisit if all of the commissioners that are in attendance today want to have some input, we could definitely, you know, either confirm or reschedule.
29th is fine with me. I have no problem with that. And I think you're right, the week before, people normally travel. So I think it's a good idea. Any other comments?
I'm at grants with that.
I'm sorry?
I was in a grant session.
Well, that's, okay, that's good. And we go ahead and set it for the 29th of November. So I think it's a good idea. Thank you. Are there any other comments that the commissioners would like to express to staff? Now's your time. Seeing none, thank you. Our next meeting will be held on October 25th in these chambers at 6:00. We'll see you then. I'm sorry. November the 29th. I apologize. I was reading from the back of the draft. Thank you. November 29th, thank you. I close the public hearing.